Not quite yet.
Not quite?
Nope, just gotta stand around for a little bit longer.
And are you hawking t-shirts?
Always be selling.
Okay, let's go.
All right, I'm gonna get some help this evening from Lucian to call this meeting to order. So I call the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Pleasant Ridge City Commission meeting to order. Thank you. All right, may we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Should I, Lucian, lead us in that?
Oh, I like it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome.
That was the best one.
I know. Right? Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
All right, well, we'll move right on to the recognition of the fall soccer champions, U eight and U ten.
Thank you for having us tonight. So we have Coach Shaw and Coach Presty's teams here. Sadly, they can't be here, they're both traveling for business. So their assistant coaches are here. Our league plays in a league with Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and Oak Park. It's called the Quad City Soccer League. This year, we have two league champs. So U eight is Coach Shaw's team, and they're in the red jerseys. And then Coach Presty's team's here, they're in the white jerseys. So if we could call Coach Pete Benner up, he's got a few words to say about Coach Shaw's team, the red team. And then, once he's done with his little speech, we're gonna have everybody come up and get introduced, and then we'll do the same thing for U ten, okay? Grab a couple pictures, if you don't mind. Thanks.
Awesome.
Hi, I'm, yes. I'm Coach Pete Benner. I grew up in Pleasant Ridge. I like these guys. I also played some rec sports as a kid, some flag football, and also swam for the Pleasant Ridge. I'd like to thank the mayor, the commissioners, and Shawnee Stamper for the opportunity to be recognized, as well as the city of Pleasant Ridge for providing this opportunity for our kids to put down their stinking iPads, get outside, exercise, make new friends, have fun, and experience the joy of winning through teamwork. I'd also like to thank the parents for their support, as well as recognize Coach Perry Shaw and Coach Dewan Johnson, both great dads who are passionate about athletics, love kids, somehow find the time to get out there and herd these little people into a somewhat cohesive bunch to play something that resembles soccer. Unfortunately, Coach Perry is on the road for work, so he's prepared something for me to share. The twenty-three, twenty twenty-three Pleasant Ridge Gooners completed back-to-back undefeated regular seasons, spring and fall, and wrapped both seasons as playoff champions. There are a few players from this team who've grown up together as close friends and teammates since Coach Perry and Coach Pete started coaching at the U six level. Over the past few years, the team has seen some players come and go, but ultimately, season after season, have continued to grow through hard work, listening, adapting, and smart decision-making. The players have learned what true teamwork is, selflessness with the ball, and above else, sport and every, above everything else, sportsmanship. They have learned to win with grace and leadership. This season, we added rotating captaincy to the team, where every player had a chance to be captain in a game. Their core responsibilities were to thank the referees on behalf of the team before and after the matches, as well as ensuring being a leader on and off the pitch. Coach Perry named the team the Gooners, after his beloved team Arsenal FC of North London. The mantra AFC follows is Victoria Concordia, Victoria Concordia Crescent, victory through harmony. And the spirit of that flows through every element of this young, eager, and humble team. We look forward to representing Pleasant Ridge in more seasons to come.
Awesome.
I believe I take this opportunity to call the kids up, or do I present the jersey?
Oh, either, oh, the jersey and then the kids.
Okay, I, well, I present Mayor Scott with this.
You guys play way better than me, that's for sure.
We better, we better see you wearing that around town. So I'm gonna start calling you guys up. If you can head over to Shawnee. We'll start off with number ten, Cole Miller, Cole Wiremiller. Number eight, Avi Shaw. Number eleven, Leo Sahoman, Samohin is not here, unfortunately. Number nine, Quentin Johnson. Number five, Landon Radar. Number seven, Noah Miller. Number six, Michaela Itrim is not with us, unfortunately, today. Number four, Quinn Wright is not with us, is he? Nope, no Quinn Wright. Last but not least, my little guy that played goalie, got smacked in the face with the ball many times, but somehow wanted to keep playing goalie, Gavin Benner. Sure.
All right, Gooners.
Yeah, Gooners.
Yep, there we go. All right, good job, good job, U eight.
Great job, U eight. Now we'll call Coach Garcia up to do the same for U ten.
Thank you very much to the commission, to the, to the whole commission staff and, and the elected officials and to Shawnee for this opportunity, for this recognition. This team, just like the U eight team, worked very hard and went undefeated in two seasons in a row. And really, it's one thing to play for your team and for your friends, it's another thing to play for your community. And tonight's recognition, I think, gives a really, another level of significance to what these kids have done, and I hope it makes them prouder to a greater degree, because it's really a beautiful thing. My, my wife and I walk the dog, and sometimes I'm wearing my Red Ravens t-shirt, and people will ask, you know, where can I get one of those? And it's just a beautiful thing that you all are doing and recognizing, the team spirit, and how this neighborhood can rally behind something as pure and wonderful as the winning Red Ravens and, and the Gooners. I wanna just say a couple of words about the philosophy behind the team, and, and really, that starts with Coach Brian Presty, who can't be here. But Coach Presty is a special leader and a special coach in that I think he understands the balance between rec soccer needing to be a lot of fun and soccer needing to be a disciplined experience. And I really love the balance that he struck with these kids, letting them have fun and not being too intense, but at the same time, giving them a sense of responsibility. And what was that responsibility? Not to win, not to even play your best, but to learn. And I really think that our team learned the game of soccer, which is a strategic game, played in formation, and that's why we were undefeated. We, we stuck to our positions, we fulfilled our responsibilities as individuals, and nobody could touch us. So it's here for the Pleasant Ridge Red Ravens. I, I don't know the numbers, but I'll call out the, the players by name, and, and when you hear your name, come on up. Oh, all right, and before I do that, I will present to the mayor the honorary Red Ravens jerseys.
Jealous of all the jerseys.
I know, right? Sweet, thank you.
You're very welcome. In no particular order, again, Sam Sheer. Lucian Osborne. Victor Pontes. Griffin Sandvitt. Nathan Zammatt. Claire Kokotovich. The Ships Boys, Blake and Elliot Ships. Penelope Samowin. Desi O'Keefe. Louis Johnson. Reagan Jagger. Eva Benner. The incomparable Ms. Charlotte Presty. And a chip off the old block, Gabe Garcia.
Way, way to go, you guys, way to go. And, and just a couple highlights, just for the sake of a couple stats that I like to have, too. The U ten team, they are champs out of seven teams across three communities. And U eight, they are champs across ten teams in three different communities. So, so it's huge accomplishments. Thank you to the parents and the coaches for all your hard work and dedication this season. So thank you to you as well.
We are PR.
Thank you, City Commission. Okay, at this time, all the soccer players, you're free to go unless you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'll do a mass exit now.
We're talking budget.
All my friends probably don't want to. Do you wanna stay for the budget, Lucian?
Oh, thank you, high five.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
It sounded great.
It's so much better.
I wish we had that harmony all the time, yes. Oh, we're back to. So funny.
It would like one of those Red Ravens shirts also.
Yeah, those are cool.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be funny to do that with squirrels? I know you run a damn squirrel, I know you would, sorry.
You're Robert.
Wow, I'm wondering if we'll get the same applause for the budget.
Maybe a team photo.
Maybe a team photo. All right, on to item five, the Pleasant Ridge Financial Statements.
You guys heard the audit, wasn't it, it was coming up?
All right, all right, let's give them some.
Hype it up a little bit. My name is Dane Porter, I'm a senior manager with Mayor Kasterson, and we did you guys' annual audit this year, and I'm the manager in charge of the audit fieldwork and the report. So I just wanna come down here tonight and present the results of the audit to you. And with that, we'll jump right in here. So I'd like to remind you guys, I guess, that the financial statements are your financial statements. We've just given our opinion on it, so the independent audit report here is the only piece that we, that we really claim is, is ours, I guess. So that's gonna be pages one through three of the financial statements is the independent audit report. So I wanted to remind you guys that the purpose or the objective of the audit is for us to express opinions on the financial statements, are they fairly presented? It is not necessarily designed or intended to detect fraud or express opinions on your internal control. So I've included a few paragraphs from that audit report here in my slides. Talk about each one of those here real quick. So the first one here, in the first section on page one, we've expressed unmodified opinions on your financial statements. So that means that everything is presented fairly in accordance with GAAP, based on our audit. We've given an unmodified opinion, it's the highest level of assurance that we can give. So like I said, everything is presented fairly, there's no modifications to that opinion. The next thing I'd like to point out here, I guess, is management's responsibility for the financial statements. The third section on page one, we'd just like to highlight that management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of the financial statements, which includes the internal control over that preparation and the fair presentation. So fraud detection, deterrence, things like that. And last paragraph I wanna touch on is the, the auditor's responsibility for the financial statements. We are responsible for attaining reasonable, not absolute, but reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatements. And then after our piece there, I guess, the financial statements themselves, we'll focus on the fund-level financial statements, kind of like the current, current modified accrual presentation, current resources focus. Again, we'll focus mainly on the general fund as the main operating fund for the city. Those financial statements are on pages twelve and fourteen of the financial statements. Page twelve, we have the balance sheet, again focusing on the general fund here. General fund fund balance end of the year, two million, two hundred eighty-four thousand, five forty, which is about sixty-five percent of your annual expenditures and other financing uses. The GFOA likes to recommend at least seventeen percent to give you us about two months of operating cash flow. So at sixty-five percent, depending on future spending, it's a nice, healthy fund balance. Not necessarily excessive, but nice and healthy. Page fourteen, we have the statement of revenues, expenditures, changes in fund balance. Again, focusing on just the general fund here. Total revenues, three million, eight hundred sixty-seven thousand, increased about two hundred ninety-eight thousand from last year, which is about an eight percent increase. Total expenditures, three point three million, again an increase of about two hundred twenty-six thousand over last year, so about a seven percent increase there. Other financing sources and uses, netted a use of about forty-nine thousand. And the bottom line there is a net change in your fund balance, about a four hundred ninety-one thousand increase in your fund balance for the year. You were budgeting for the year for about a hundred fifty-six thousand dollar increase, so you came in above that, that budgeted fund balance number. Next slide here, just a visual representation of the past five years. Blue graph there representing total revenues, the burgundy representing total expenditures, and the yellow representing total fund balance. So as you can see, over the past five years, revenues have exceeded fund expenditures, and you've added to your fund balance in each of those five years. So good, sound financial condition, good trend. General fund revenue composition, just gonna point out here, I guess, that sixty-seven percent of your revenues come from property taxes, about ten percent comes from intergovernmental revenues. Fairly consistent with the year before. Next slide, same thing, but for expenditures, representing the annual expenditures for the year. Biggest expenditure source being general public safety at fifty-one percent, general government following behind that at twenty-five percent, and then recreation and culture at eleven percent. Again, pretty consistent with the year before. This graph here represents the unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your annual expenditures. Showing a little bit of a dip there in twenty twenty-two as you transferred money over to capital improvement funds. But again, nice, healthy increases in your fund balance, upward trend. This slide represents that same unassigned fund balance versus expenditures, but kind of focusing on that seventeen percent number that the, the, the GFOA likes to recommend. Just gonna show on the gap between what they recommend and what your current fund, or your actual fund balances are. The red being the recommended fund balance in dollars, and the blue being your actual fund balance for the city. That's all I plan to go over, but if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Thank you very much, and you know, you'll hear us talk a lot about fund balance, and that's, and we mentioned earlier to ourselves, for a city the size of Pleasant Ridge, it's really important to keep a healthy fund balance, because any little thing could actually be really big to us. And we need to have the capital available to cover these things that might happen, which might be a small thing for Royal Oak or Detroit. So we keep focus on that, and it's good to hear that everything's in, in good shape.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just before you act, I, I put together a few slides.
Oh, yes, please.
I just wanted to look at some trends today. And thank you, Dane, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dane.
Thank you.
Just some trends over time, because, you know, we're looking at this year's audit in, you know, in isolation. But when you're looking at kind of the last ten or thirteen years, I guess it is, just showing our net position trends, you can see that when we were at fiscal year eighteen, we were down about five million in our net position, and we sort of recovered there for a variety of reasons. The Water and Sewer Fund is another thing that we've been focusing on as we have our water infrastructure project. And this just shows that those increased funding sources for the water fund are starting to increase our war chest for those projects. The other thing is adjusting for inflation over time, does he trends? You know, how have we, how have we spent money? This is all of our expenditures for the general fund and revenues adjusted to twenty twenty-three dollars. And what you see is it's a very flat expenditure trend. It, it really bounces between three point two and three point three-five million. It's been a constant. So, you know, in terms of just the cost of providing services, we've kept up with inflation, but it has not increased in real terms. Revenues, on the other hand, have increased, and this is because revenues are from many sources besides taxes. But when you look at all funds revenues, tax revenue has remained, again, constant. We haven't seen, obviously, when we did the Headley override in twenty fourteen, and there were a couple other millages that increased tax collections, and really, those just made up for the losses coming out of the Great Recession, but tax collections have been very consistent at that level ever since fiscal year sixteen. So it's just inflationary increases since that time. All those other general fund funding sources, pretty consistent, you know, they move around a little bit here and there. When you look at expenditures, this is where capital outlay, as you might guess, depending on what project you're doing that year, you know, that moves around. And you can see the impact of COVID, as, after fiscal year twenty, a lot of capital projects got shelved and delayed. But all those other expenditures, all those cost centers, you'll see public safety has been increasing, but that really started in fiscal year seventeen and eighteen, when we started to attack the pension funding issue. So there was the millage that provided increased funding dedicated to the police pension fund. So that, that has increased, but everything else has been fairly consistent, again, over time.
Jim, what is, excuse me, Mayor? Jim, what is that one that's spiking in the?
That's, that's capital outlay.
That's the capital, okay.
Yes.
And that was four.
So fiscal year seventeen, you'll see two things that happened in fiscal year seventeen. There's the blue line that, towards the bottom, that goes up to about five hundred thousand. It's because we issued debt to forward all the remaining road projects. So starting in fiscal year seventeen and eighteen, we did Hanover, Norwich, Ridge, and Indiana, and Bermuda, all within a span of two years. So there's a big capital outlay, and we sold bonds to forward ourselves money to do that, because the roads were in condition that they weren't going to last. You know, three or four or five years if we continue doing the one street a year pattern.
Thank you.
So, just wanted to highlight some of those long-term trends and show that, you know, really, yes, costs increase, but only commensurate with inflation.
Right. And if you're looking for the audit, it's in the City Commission packet this month. You can find it on, well, you'll soon find it online.
It's online.
All right, the meeting notice. All right, we'll move on to public discussion.
Mayor, we need a motion to receive and file.
Oh, sorry.
So Mayor, I move the audit of the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three be received and filed.
A second. Any discussion? And may we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, we'll move on to public discussions, items not on the agenda. Yes, please.
Ted Zachary from Sixty-eight Devonshire. And I, I thought I'd start off with my visual aid first. The suspense is over. Last year, I, I challenged all the citizens that I could grow more butternut squash than anyone else. And today, I am undefeated, I believe. I declare myself as champion butternut squasher of Pleasant Ridge for two thousand twenty-three. So for my visual aid, it's one of my bigger squashes. And this is about a nine-pounder. And it's in my backyard, and I share these other squashes with neighbors, so they don't complain too much. Now, there's another challenger of a person who grows pumpkins, Mike K. of Wellesley. I declare him as champion pumpkin grower of Pleasant Ridge of two thousand twenty-three.
Yes. And sunflowers, too.
And sunflowers, but yeah, those pumpkins are huge.
Okay, now, I'm gonna give you a message. It's gonna be slightly different than usual. So I'll step here. Now, we all love autumn, I believe, I think we love the colors, they're spectacular. We start saying, did you see that one down the block? It's the first one changing colors. Well, look at that beautiful yellow one, look at that beautiful red one. It's beautiful, and even when they fall, it's just beautiful. It's like fireworks with no noise or pollution, it's just beautiful. And then they fall. Now, my leaf says, now that I've fallen, you don't, don't love me anymore, you don't think I'm brilliant. You shoved me to the street where I'm run over by cars and trucks. It's just terrible, we're blown in there with noisy, polluting machines. And then I'm stuffed in a bag, I'm placed in a truck, dark truck, driven miles and miles away from my family, my roots.
Yep.
Quite literally.
I lost my family. It's so sad. But there's a squirrel, squirrel gathered some nuts to keep warm. Smart squirrel, holding on to the leaves to keep warm during this cold winter. I love squirrels. They're smart, and that's my message.
All right.
Can I have one real quick?
Sure.
Albert Camus' short little poem or saying, but autumn is the second spring when every leaf is a flower. I love that one. And it reminds me of what you just said.
No, thank you. That's nice, thanks.
Thank you, Ted.
Were there any other items that were not on the agenda? Okay, we'll go on to the City Commission liaison reports. Commissioner Budnick?
Thank you, Mayor. First coats from the cold, there is a collection until eleven thirty. Boxes are located on the pool side of the community center, so help keep Oakland County warm this winter. All sizes and all seasons are certainly welcome. I'm sure Ted would approve of that reusing and the donation. How to do a perfect plank workshop instructor, Victoria Dickinson, is coming in on Sunday, November nineteenth, at twelve PM in the yoga room, cost is fifteen dollars. And do you know how to do a proper plank? I certainly don't. Learn how to establish an important strength training foundation that will help improve your workouts. Variations and progressions will be taught as well. So if you're not comfortable getting down on the floor, you will be instructed on how to. Variations and progressions will be taught as well. So if you're not comfortable getting down on the floor, you will be instructed on how to perform a plank against the wall. So be sure to wear comfortable clothing, bring a mat and a water bottle, and if you have any knee issues, back issues, Jim, bring a couple towels or extra mat for padding. Next up is the, one of uh, I think, fan favorites, the tree lighting ceremony is on Monday, December fourth, and that's at six P. M. in Memorial Park. Welcome the spirit of the season with your family, friends, neighbors, and of course, Santa, and stay for photos with Santa if you'd like. The holiday greens workshop is Wednesday, December sixth at six thirty in the community center, so you can create a seasonal arrangement in a social atmosphere. There are limited reservations available in October, and more info to come. PRGC hors d'oeuvres and exciting raffles will be included. So bring your own clippers and favorite beverage if you wish. Join in the fun. Cookies and cocoa with Santa is on Friday, December eighth at six thirty. That's seven bucks per person, and that's for ages two and older. That's limited to the first hundred people that are registered, and the registration has begun. It was on ten one is when it started. Pictures with Santa will be held during this timeframe and more details to come. Letters to Santa are due Friday, December fifteenth. Santa looks forward to hearing from his friends and PR. Mailboxes will be located at the community center, City Hall, to receive your letters. So include your name and address on the letter so Santa can write back, which is awesome. So get on wishing, and this is open to PR residents only. Just a few more here. Christmas home decorating contest is uh, this is gonna let your holiday spirit shine inside and out, so enter your home to win. The categories are best decorations, best indoor decorations. Uh, email your photos and your address to greg@gcallback@cityofpleasantridge.org by twelve seventeen to enter. The fifteen up club day trips to Meadowbrook Holiday Tour and lunch on Wednesday, December thirteenth, nine forty-five A. M. uh to two thirty P. M. The cost is nineteen dollars. Lunch cost is on your own. It's the most wonderful time of year, and the the annual Meadowbrook Holiday Walk brings the magic of the season alive with an unforgettable series of activities and special events. So experience the wonder of one of our more than fifty magnificent trees that are decorated, including a ten-foot-tall poinsettia tree created by a hundred and fifty live plants dazzling trimmings and lights galore. And if, if you haven't done Meadowbrook, it's a truly magical thing to experience, both inside and out. So the tour inside is gorgeous, and the outside is great for little ones, too. I don't take my little ones inside. I don't want them to break anything. The outside walk is a beautiful thing. It's decked out, and it's, I think it's the fourth largest historical home in the country. Uh, eighty-eight thousand square feet, if anyone's counting. So cool, super cool.
Is it one of the Gilded Age mansions? Is it?
Uh, I just know it's the Dodge, the Dodge and Wilson family lumber baron and the Dodge motor.
It's after Gilded.
Okay, sorry. Uh. Gingerbread house making. We'll continue with the spirit here, uh Tuesday, December nineteenth at six thirty P. M. And extra kudos to someone that signs up for all these things. Uh, that's at six thirty P. M. Cost is fifteen bucks, and registration has already begun. Learn how to make your very own gingerbread house. Every participant gets to keep their decorated house at the end. Though there will be holiday tunes playing, hot cocoa flowing. No one will watch if you spike it. Spread the holiday spirit by inviting friends to join you in the special event, and this is a drop-off event for kids K through six, so don't spike that. Dinner is not included. Uh, Junior Garden Club, uh, Sunday, December seventeenth is ten A. M. This is a pine cone ornaments, uh, like for kids, so they can create ornaments using pine cones, paint glitter, ribbons, yarn. Anything you can find and fun to add on, so supplies and snacks will be provided, so that sounds like something fun for the kiddos. And then last but not least, the library holidays, uh, the holiday library hours, they close at five P. M. on Wednesday, on Wednesday, November twenty-second. And will reopen on Saturday, November twenty-fifth for the holiday, and they'll reopen at ten A. M. on the twenty-fifth. And you can always check out the website and uh the ridger for more info, and thank you for that robust planning. Lot of fun.
Nice.
Very nice.
And hopefully.
It is busy.
Chris, do you want to touch on the rec commission, too?
Yeah, well, if you have something prepared, then I'll I'll add on it, if that's all right.
I think one of the uh best ideas that came out of that meeting, every meeting, there's always something. Um, but it was suggested that the Huntington Woods Library come to the uh rec center to do cards there to talk about all their online services and programs. So they are gonna come Saturday, I think it's January twenty-seventh, to the rec center, and they're gonna sign families up to get their library cards, all the, how to use Hoopla and Libby and all the different apps. Because there are so many services that I now take advantage of as an employee, knowing that they're there for us, and I want to make, we wanted to make sure that the rest of the community knew, too. So Deb wasn't here to speak about it, but, so we're excited for that.
Thank you, and we were also talking about doing another one in, we'll do like two in the year, so then we'll do one maybe pool.
Poolside.
Poolside.
Yep.
You know, right.
Yeah, like a swim and sing or swim and read type of thing, too, so, yep, so two in twenty twenty-four, so.
Nice.
Yeah, that was a great idea, and uh thank goodness for uh Huntington Woods Library staff. They're very receptive to working together. So it's been a really easy merger with them and having Deb in place, so.
Cool.
Awesome.
Awesome.
Thank you, Shawnee.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Budnick. Commissioner Lenko.
So for schools, um, we've got Mr. Tolbert and Mrs. Wright here tonight. I don't want to steal any of their thunder. Uh, but yeah, I, again, I recommend everybody sign up for the Ferndale e-blasts, watch the uh school board meetings on on YouTube, uh if they're so interested. Uh, but yeah, there's some administrative changes, um, and again, they'll have a a larger update, so I don't want to be redundant. It was now, okay, perfect.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
I prepared something, just something short, but uh good evening, Mayor Scott and honorable commissioners. Uh, on behalf of Ferndale Public Schools, our Board of Education, and our interim superintendent, Camille Hibbler. Um, I'm very excited to be here before you tonight. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Uh, my name is Felicia Wright. I'm accompanied by my colleague, Robert Tolbert. I serve Ferndale now in the interim capacity of deputy superintendent. My day job is assistant superintendent of operations, and I've had the uh opportunity and um pleasure of working with Ms. Stamper, right? When we opened the pool last summer, and that was a pleasure, and obviously, working with Commissioner Lenko. Uh, he's been steadfast in his uh serving of the school board and being um of the school district and being present. And we appreciate your presence on the facilities planning committee, which is very, very important to our school district. Thank you so much for your time.
It's a pleasure working with both you.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions for me?
Any questions? Uh, none for me. Sorry.
No, uh, thank you for coming, though, but yeah, there, I know, it's a, it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. It's a lot of work, but we'll get through it, and we appreciate your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And is there, sorry, Felicia, is there anything um our our residents can do to help as far as the search or involvement or anything along those lines, or?
Sure.
Okay.
At this point, we're not at that juncture. Right now, we're just getting through the calendar year, right? We have a number of important events uh to um implement for the kiddos before we go on Christmas break. And then I imagine that the school board has plans for that search for the spring, and I'm I'm certain that they'll reach out to you to be involved in that process. Okay.
Business as usual.
Yes, sir. That's right. All the way upward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Um, Commissioner Perry?
Oh, thank you. Um, so the planning commission and DDA has not met since we have last met. The next meeting will be January twenty-second in twenty twenty-four, so yay. Um, but as everybody can see, there's a lot of work that's happening on um behalf of the DDA with the downtown, um, the improvements along the Woodward streetscape. It's fun to see all that moving forward fast-ish and and wrapping up. The um, the RFP did go out for the planning firms for the master plan and the arts council. Um, it'll, there'll be some great public processes that everybody will be invited to join in and to help weigh in with opinions and ideas. Um, working on both of those uh planning processes for the master plan and the arts council planning in the new year. And um, and that's all. So thank you so much, you know, try and join us on January twenty-second, seven P. M. right here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. And the work over the pathways, and I mean, they look amazing.
I know, it's so fun.
I mean, with the red, I mean, it looks beautiful, so.
And the trees going in.
And the trees going in, and it's happening so fast. I mean, they were.
At this point, yeah.
Yeah, so.
The weekend was really fun.
Yeah, so if anyone hasn't seen it, get over to the east side, because it really looks beautiful.
It does.
Thank you.
May I ask a quick question on DDA planning commission for the master plan?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I know the last time there was a master plan reboot, uh, what was it, about ten years ago, and then five years ago, there was like a mid-cycle. Uh, there was some like amount of community involvement with like score, like taking surveys, scoring, down-selecting ideas. Um, is there gonna, do you envision or imagine something like that is gonna take place for this next iteration of the master plan?
Absolutely. Yeah, there's gonna be a public process for sure. We've talked about it a lot in the um, in the meetings, but then also, it's, you know, that's one of the parts of the RFP. Is, you know, the public process when, um, and that's, you know, something for both the arts council and the um ma- the the combined master plan. It'll be important, and, you know, you'll get lots of notice, too, to come join in, because it it reminds me of when we did Gainesboro Park. I mean, that was such an amazing public process that, and residents really just flocked to, you know, the different meetings and and gave some very valuable input, so.
And and then the idea is to have the master plan uh drafted and adopted in calendar year twenty-four, so it'll be like within the twelve-month band?
I don't know about that. Um, depending on when we get started, you know, we may not be kicking it off until summer of next year. So usually, you have a twelve-month timeframe for these normally, so probably twenty twenty-five.
Gotcha.
But the last master plan kicked off, I think, in twenty thirteen or fourteen. It was adopted in late twenty fourteen, early twenty fifteen. So it would be ten years from last adoption for the last plan.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Schmier?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, so museum openings. We're opening, we're open this Saturday, ten until noon, and then in December, we're open four times. Um, we are going to have Santa's Village coming back in, which is always great. Um, in December, I will give you all of the dates, but we will be open starting at five o'clock before the tree lighting, so we will be there. Um, it is also a wonderful time to buy your then-and-now book for everyone who has not purchased a book yet. So anytime the museum is open, you can always buy them, buy a book. You can also buy it at City Hall, but also tree lighting will be selling. Um, in addition, we will be selling um ornaments. I typically don't like to call them holiday ornaments, but we are getting into the holiday season, so holiday ornaments. So those will also be for sale. Um, so again, this uh Saturday, and then December fourth, and then we'll be open three more times. Um. We had our meeting last week, and the big focus moving forward um in the coming year for historical will be to really start digitizing and getting things digital. Um, we, they also talked about getting, you know, a tablet and a screen for the museum also, so once we started digitizing. People will be able to come in and see, see their pictures and their house files online. There's so much information now that is all digitized, but there's only so much room in the small museum. So that's the focus um of the coming year, and then... That's all I have. Oh, also, the hundred-year tiles did just come in, so everyone who has ordered a hundred-year tile, keep an eye on your email, keep an eye on your mail. You will be getting um notification. You'll be able to come into City Hall to pick them up, or if that doesn't work, we can deliver them also, but just keep an eye out, because those have finally come in. Um, and historical will be placing orders for the next hundred-year tiles um in the next couple months. Pawabik has told us, though, the lead time is a year, so right now they're, so just know that once you order them, it does take about a year to get them. We have not forgotten. They are coming. And that's all I have.
If your house is a hundred years old, it'll manage.
I know. Right, exactly. Um, yeah, that's all I have.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
For Katie? All right, we'll move on to governmental reports. Fire or police? I'll go with the fire.
Good evening, everybody. So this time of year, I always like to remind everybody as we are raking our leaves to the street. Um, please do not park your car on top of the pile of leaves. That's a really bad combination. Hot engines, hot exhausts on top of leaves, results in a fire that you don't want. So um, let's keep everybody safe, and also, just for the amazing workers trying to come through to clean all that up for us. Take, keeping your cars off the streets and all those areas makes it so they can actually do their job, but let's keep everybody safe. And also, for anybody who has those wonderful wood burning fireplaces, have it cleaned and inspected every year so that it stays a really nice, wonderful ambiance thing and not into something that you're calling us for. So keep everybody safe. And then I did bring, I know I brought ones before, but I didn't like the ones I left before, except for citizens of Ferndale, and I don't like that because Pleasant Ridge is our community, too. You guys, and my fire department, I will tell you, takes that very personally. Like, they fight for Pleasant Ridge. That is, it's big ownership. They brag about how long that we've been doing it. Um, but I, I sent um virtual ones over, and I have these, there's a couple back here, and what it is, is you can just scan the Q. R. code, and it takes you through your own house. You can go through your own house and do a home fire safety inspection, and when you're done, you get a customized resource guide that's very personal to you. And in that, too, if you find out that, well, it says I'm supposed to have X number of smoke detectors, but I don't have that many, uh, you can contact us, and we have free smoke detectors. If you own your home, we can come install them for you. If you have a question, if told you, hey, I should have this, or it says this is kind of, it's talking about some hazards in my kitchen that I'd like more information. You can send us a message right through the app. It'll come into us, and one of us will either come out or contact you back, so it's a great way to reach out to your fire department in a way that maybe doesn't feel intimidating, but allows you to get um really good information. And we are not, it's not, we don't even draw boundaries. If somebody, if you have family in another area that wants to do this, share it. Um, this is open for anybody. Obviously, our focus is we want to protect our communities that are our communities, but there's no limit. If somebody lives in another community of a family member, you want to share it to them, anybody can do this for their home, okay?
That's great.
Yeah, that is great.
Any questions for me?
Uh, I know we have some neighbors that have already put up their Christmas trees. People that have already put up their Christmas trees.
If they're live Christmas trees, just definitely make sure you're keeping them watered. You don't want them to dry out. Anytime you bring out your Christmas lights, take time to inspect and make sure that there's not cracks, like bare wires. You know, it's all those things that can result in some negative things. Um, so again, we want happy holiday seasons, and if you want to just see us, just call us. We'll stop by for a visit. You don't have to create an incident for us to come visit you. We can be bought with cookies, whatever. But no, we, we still, and, you know, I am so fortunate coming down to this community. Not only do I love the communities, but the people I work with are amazing. And when we get calls for birthday drive-bys, block parties, hey, I have this going on, or somebody calling like, hey, my mom just got discharged from the hospital, and I don't know how I'm gonna get her into the house. They're like, no problem. They're over there, and the firefighter just picked her up out of the seat and carried her in. Their daughter described it as like she was a new bride and carried her across the threshold. Um, but that's the heart of the people that are serving this community, and so it's just, we love being out. We like opportunities to be engaged, so just let us know if there's something you want us there for. And we'd be happy to be there if we can, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's a normal November. Uh, the chief is usually up north, and retired Chief Noack is up north, so here I am. Uh, just wanted to give you guys an update of an incident that we had back on November third. Uh, Officer Johnson was out on patrol about five thirty in the morning and realized that a car was in the area that shouldn't be in the area, and it turned out to be an abandoned stolen vehicle. Um, while he was taking care of that, a actual stolen vehicle came in from a report on Oakdale. Um, we were hoping that maybe somebody just took that car and dumped the one, not had anything else happen. However, when Officer Lumpke arrived a half hour later, we started getting the calls that someone had gone through open cars last night. And we had two more stolen vehicles that were dumped in our city.
Hmm.
Um, we did recover the uh stolen vehicle that was taken from Oakdale. It was actually still on Oakdale, just down a little bit further. Um, so that was good, uh minimal damage. Um, I believe that's at the collision shop getting fixed now. Um, but once again, we, we preach it constantly, lock your doors. Um, not that that could have caused the uh... Not that that could have caused the, uh, vehicle that was stolen to not happen. We don't know what they used to get into that, got car programmers, we got all kinds of stuff going. Um, but lock your doors, uh, the vehicles that were gone through and changed, and just miscellaneous small items that were taken, could have all been alleviated by locking the doors.
And we have had some instances in the past where, uh, because we're just comfortable leaving keys in the car, if they're in the garage, take your keys out of the car and put them somewhere else, lock the door, even if it's in your garage.
And don't think I just harp on Pleasant Ridge, uh, my father-in-law constantly leaves his keys in the car, and I am telling him, please take the keys out of the car.
You're right.
So, um, moving into the holiday season, we've been talking about it all in the evening, uh, just want everyone keep aware of your surroundings. When, especially when you're shopping, stay in those lighted areas, watch for people that don't belong, that are watching what you're doing. Uh, just want to keep everybody safe there. Uh, our package thefts, they're gonna start to increase, uh, all over the area. I've seen it on our, uh, detective listserv, the emails have been coming through, had a bunch of package thefts in the area, Southfield, Berkeley. Once again, we always talk about the phone scams, phone scams, we haven't had too many here lately, but, uh, if someone calls saying, you know, grandpa, can you get me out of jail, I need gift cards. Jails don't take gift cards, um, if you have any questions about that at all, call us, we'll, we'll come help you out with that. Uh, identity thefts continue as well. Just wanted to remind everyone, annualcreditreport.com is your one that's free for the, through the government. Uh, you can do that once a year, run that, make sure that the accounts that are popping up on that are the accounts that you actually have. If anything's different, come see us, get a report from us, we'll get you to contact the, uh, Trade Commission and get you started there. As far as other scams, if you have any questions whatsoever, come by, call dispatch, we will send an officer out. There's all kinds of scams going on, uh, especially online. We had one, uh, two months ago, it was, uh, one of the, we'll fix your computer type thing, and, uh, some people lost some money. You think that there's an issue, you aren't sure, you don't remember contacting this company, and now they're contacting you saying that you owe them money, call us. We'll come out, see what we can do. Other than that, I, we'll see you all December fourth when we bring Santa over. Any questions, anything that I can help with?
Yes, please.
So, should we be encouraging residents, um, we were talking about leaving lights on and things like that, like as, you know, outdoor lights and trying to light everything up and maybe have.
We always encourage that.
Okay, great.
There, there's always certain streets that, you know, you, you can't get lit. I recall Amherst being one of those streets on Midnight where you drive around, you're like, oh.
We'll challenge Amherst to light up.
I mean, no judgment, anyway.
No judgment.
Yeah, I have, in my house, I have the photo cells on mine, so they go on at dusk and off in the morning.
Oh, that's nice.
So, don't even have to think about it, they just automatically go.
Yeah, I have a couple of great neighbors along Indiana who have motion detector lights, and they totally blind you as you're walking, but it works.
They do.
Yeah, I have one attached to my ring, actually, so when anyone's heading down my driveway, it lights them up.
Very nice.
And they run, and I see them.
Back for, uh, on the incident from November third, uh, thank you to everyone that gave us video. We actually have video of the suspects, it's a little farther away, but it was four people that came into town. Uh, we watched them load their goods into another stolen vehicle, most likely, and then take off. Um, but thank you for everyone that did provide the video, we sent out one of the Ring Alerts, um, I don't know if you're familiar with that, but we can geofence an area, shoot it out, and if your camera caught something that might be relevant, it'll send you something saying, hey, the police would like this, is it okay to give to them? And then if there was nothing, you never even got an email knowing that that was needed, so, but we did get some videos, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anything from Shawnee?
Uh, I think Chris covered everything.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. All right, we'll move on, uh, consideration of the, uh, consent agenda. Uh, maybe we have a motion.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Any conversation? All right, let's have a vote.
Commissioner Schmier?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Bodnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. All right, on to a cool topic, uh, uh, our survey results.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This thing works, right?
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah. Look at that. Just sitting here, I just wanted to say how safe I feel. I mean, it just, it's great to hear the presentations that we get from fire and police, it just, you learn a lot and you feel good about it. And I always lock my closet, nobody wants anything in there, so it's okay. First, before I get into the survey, I wanted to congratulate Chris and Ann for their hard-fought election victories.
Thank you very much.
I think that was great, and for Kirsten for running.
Yeah.
The whole, the whole, getting ready for next year. You did? No machines flipping, okay, all right, good. All right, and, and also I wanted to, to, for the, on the survey, I wanted to recognize Kelsey Hartung and, and Jim for all the work that they have put in, um, to put the presentation together, and then there's going to be a report, and there's some other ancillary materials that you'll be seeing as we, um, start to roll it out. So, tonight we're gonna give you the highlights, the lowlights, whatever you wanna say. Um, we did a survey back in two thousand sixteen, and I think at that time, Jim and I had the intention of maybe doing it again. Jim probably not, I had, I had, I had an intent, I thought, well, this'll be fun, we'll do it every couple of years, and we're just gonna, Jim went. You know, and other things got in the way, and so, seven years later, with all the changes that have gone on in the city, and also as you're starting to talk about master, updating master plans and a lot of other, it seemed like a good time to, to try to run it again. And we decided to also, um, because Kelsey was now on for developing a communication strategy, we thought we'd add communications questions to try to better understand how the residents of Pleasant Ridge actually consume information. How do they get it, how would they like to get it, um, is there any way that we can improve that? Um, because for whatever reason, people never hear anything. You know, it's always, always amazing, no matter how many times you throw it out there, I never, I never heard a thing about it, so. Um, this will not be as poetic as, uh, Ted, but we will do our, do our best. So real, quick summary, and, and I think that I wanna highlight this as much as anything else. We received eight hundred and seventy-two responses. Um, in two thousand sixteen, when we ran it, we got three hundred and six. So we increased that, the numbers from three-six to eight-seventy-two, and if you, if you look at census numbers, we actually accounted for forty-two and a half percent of all Pleasant Ridge residents over the age of eighteen, and forty-four percent of all Pleasant Ridge regis- residents over the age of twenty-five. That's a hell of a, uh, response rate. You're not gonna see that any, anywhere else, you know, if you get sixteen percent, twenty percent, you're probably thinking, this is wonderful. So, my hat's off, um, and thank you to the residents of Pleasant Ridge, and I have to, I have to attribute a lot of that to, as you see, the postcard that was sent to every, we started on September eleventh, was the opening of it, and this postcard was sent to every house, every household in the city. And judging by response rate, that's when people, you know, they all voted within the first couple of days, and then it always tails off. But what we tried to do with other messages coming through the city, I board people with some, some, you know, some of the data coming out of the survey as we were going along, just try to, try to keep people going, and we did a couple last-minute at some of the events, just to remind people, and, and, um, again, it was a tremendous turnout. So, we start out looking at the streets of Pleasant Ridge, and what was the response rate? And you might question, how in the heck could Oakland Park have a hundred and thirteen thou- thirteen percent response rate? We have some problems with the survey, right? What we did was we allowed anybody in a household to respond, so more than one person could respond in a household. Um, and just, we'll, we'll talk about the age so that you could get an idea of who, who did respond. But we see that, that a lot of households, that a lot of streets, maybe not every house, I mean, it's possible that every house had one respondent, but chances are you had multiple respondents um, in, in several different households, and that kind of drove those numbers up. But you can see all the way down the, the, uh, across all streets, we had a pretty good turnout. I mean, more than three out of five on any street in the city, so, um, I thought that was a terrific response. You'll notice west-side streets, which tend to have smaller numbers of house, houses, for one thing, which helps to drive some of the rates up, but they were the top performers, and then you'll notice that Sylvan, um, was the first east-side street.
Coincidence?
Now, it's not that just because I live on Sylvan, but it's the fact that I know that four houses on Sylvan are permanently vacant, and so I took them out. I didn't know that on other streets, so Sylvan got the benefit of my, uh, knowledge, but you can see that every street was well-represented. Um, years of residents, again, we had a good representation, I mean, you have to figure out how many households have been here for less than a year. We got thirty-four, um, people to respond to have lived in the city for less than a year, which is great, and then another fifty-eight for one to two. So we're getting at least responses of some of the new residents, as well as obviously the highest is those who've lived here twenty or more years, which tends to be a thing around Pleasant Ridge. We tend to live here, once we get here, we tend to live here for a long time. Um, in terms of the age of respondents, again, we got a distribution, but a fairly decent distribution, but what we found out, there were actually six respondents who were under twenty-five, so they're not on the, on the mix. But when I looked at the distribution of age in the census, uh, for these categories, the biggest problem we had was with twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds. It's also some, you know, problem with voting for twenty-five to thirty-four-olds too. But twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds represent about, where did it, oh, represents fifteen percent of the city's population, but only six percent of respondents. So that was, that was kind of, I'd like to have seen a much better response from the, from the younger age groups. As far as the group sixty-five and over, they were about three percentage points over their representation in the city, so it's not, not so much. It was fairly good representation, fairly mixed, you know, within a couple of percentages across the various age groups. Again, only at the far ends did we see, um, kind of any, um, differences with, with what we would expect. Um, where children are schooled, we always, we've, we asked this in two thousand sixteen, and we asked it in two thousand twenty-three. And interesting, if you look at, you can look at the pie chart, but if you look at two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-three, the biggest changes we saw were Pleasant, uh, Ferndale Public Schools. We had twenty-eight percent of our respondents sent their kids to Ferndale Schools back in two thousand sixteen. That jumped to thirty-eight percent, um, in two thousand twenty-three. So that was the big, we saw an increase in the percentage of our residents sending their children to, to Ferndale Schools, a slight drop in other public school districts, primarily Berkeley, Royal Oak. Um, and we saw a slight drop in the private school and in homeschool, it went from three percent to one percent, which I would have thought it might have gone the other way, um, considering pandemic and everything else, but, but not in terms of our respondents. So that was a good sign, a good sign for Pleasant Ri- uh, for Pleasant Ridge and their engagement with Ferndale Public Schools. Now we'll start talking about some of the condition rating, and again, I think the overall message is people are quite satisfied, um, with the, with the services, with the infrastructure, with a number of things. But, but as you can see, and it's, and it's interesting, it's kind of, people on, in politics and people in schools, you always like your local more than you like the bigger, you know, so you like your local legislature, you don't legislator, you don't like the legislature as a whole. Um, and you see that people tend to like their street better than streets across the city, they like their sidewalk better than sidewalks throughout the city. So, you know, you just have that personal attachment, but, but you can. But we can see, I mean, you're talking about ninety percent generally, uh, of residents felt either satisfied or very satisfied.
That's amazing.
Or felt, felt it was excellent or good, right? So, good sign. Satisfaction with routine maintenance, again, um, you know, people are, tend not to be very anything, right? So, pretty good, forty percent very satisfied, but another fifty-three percent, uh, fifty-five percent satisfied. So, again, very little dissatisfaction, couple people, there's always somebody that just doesn't know. They're just not sure. So two percent just, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's okay. Um, looking at, this is, this is great, because it's, we're in the middle of, we're, we asked the question before we started fall pickup. And certainly the snow hasn't fallen, so a lot of this is what we remember from last year, right? Um, if we were to ask today about fall pickup, I would think it would be, people would be very satisfied, I've seen, I've been very satisfied, I think those guys are going through the, and the way they're doing it with three people, at least I saw them, three people raking, and, I mean, beautiful, um, and moving through, I mean, they were certainly finished with the west side, and we're on the east side in the first week, um, picking up, so, um, we'll see how that is reflected the next time we ask that question. But people generally are very, very satisfied, um, with both snow and, uh, fall leaf pickup. Streets and infrastructure. Um, agree or disagree, speeding is a problem, hmm, generally, people feel that spe- speeding is a problem. Um, we tend to see cars running stop signs more of a problem on the west side than the east side, because we have so many stop signs along Indiana, and people are running those signs left and right, so I think people are more, when you look at, I was doing some cross tabs, looking at, uh, west side, east side, you just have more stop signs over on, on the west side, I think people are more, on the east side, we're more, um, aware of that. So that tends to be more of a problem. Crossing, we, we know the issues around crossing Woodward, no matter where you cross Woodward, hopefully that, that will be alleviated to some extent with now, um, the, the word, work that's going on on Woodward. Satisfaction with public safety services, very satisfied, it, the one thing, it's interesting, we talked about eight hundred and seventy-two responses, but only four hundred and ninety-nine people indicated that they had, had any involvement with the police, which is probably good. Hundred and twenty-one fire and, and a hundred and ninety-five on police-fire dispatch. So these, these numbers represent just the percentage of people that, um, actually had interactions, and as you can see, very pleased, um, with police-fire, somewhat less on dispatch, just, I mean, they're generally satisfied, it's just not as very satisfied, so. Feeling sa- safety in the city, great, ninety-nine percent of residents feel safe or very safe. I feel bad for the, whoever it is in those little, those little pieces of the pie up at the top, there are only a few people that don't feel safe, and some people that just didn't know whether they felt safe. But the numbers are very small, so generally, um, and we'll see, in terms of issues in the city, safety is definitely not the issue that even, that it used to be. Don't worry about this, this is a lot of lines, but what we would, looked at is parks and recreation, and asked people about how they viewed the quality of their parks and recreation facilities. And you can see that people are generally quite pleased, um, there's very little, um, issues. I mean, people, in terms, again, excellent is always difficult to get people to say excellent on anything, but excellent and good are the general, um, ratings for everything. You notice that the, the, the three are, that had some issues were Hessel Park, the dog park, and, and the Wellness Fitness Center to some extent. Um, and it was basically, these were kind of the areas that fewer people, even, when you looked at the numbers, fewer people actually engaged with any of those. So that was an issue, and then people who do engage with them tend to feel very strong about some of the issues. So we've, we've heard problems with the dog park, we've, Hessel Park, people, those who know where Hessel Park is, and many don't, obviously, but they feel that it's, it's just not getting the care that it needs, and they'd like to see a little bit of, of cleanup, a little bit of plantings, and just some TLC, that's kind of it. Um, and the fitness center, you know, that's, everybody has their own personal, it's more of a personal thing in terms of equipment and cleanliness and whatever they happen to be. in terms of equipment and cleanliness and whatever they happen to be. But generally, I mean, you're still talking eighty-six percent are saying the Wellness Center is is good or excellent. So it's not really an issue. And the, and the one thing is to point out that also, Kelsey is, we asked a number of questions where we asked people if you wanted to make additional comments, they could. So people took those opportunities. Sometimes when they didn't have the responses that they wanted, and something, we gave them an option for other, they responded. There was a question we asked about Roosevelt School, and there was another question about, after all, after you've answered all these questions, what other things would you like to tell us? Kelsey has been working on putting all those answers, and so all the individual answers will be available, too. And it's, you know, trying to go through three hundred individual answers and come up with themes. It's amazing how many non-themes. There are so many individual feelings and individual input that it's very difficult. So it'll be fun for people who have nothing better to do to sit and read all these long lists of responses. But in terms of parks, the one things that we wanted to pull out that were particularly pleasing to see and also gratifying for the for all the work that the city has done, the community center, all the work on the big room, the patio, everything that has been done to clean up and and really build up the community center. You can see that the excellent rating went from forty-five to fifty-nine percent. Gainsborough Park, I mean, we all know what's happened to Gainsborough Park and all the work that was done. And to see it go from twenty-three percent to sixty-six percent excellent is wonderful. It should be ninety percent excellent, but that's, it's okay. But it's really gratifying to see that people really have recognized the work that's been done and and see it for what it is and and are very pleased, so. Hats off to the city. We also asked, are there new features? So for the Recreation Commission, for all the recreation. The one thing I can say is that we need a pickleball court in every quadrant of the city. If you've got an empty lot, or you have a side lot that you've got nothing to do, put a pickleball court in. Of course, you gotta listen to that ball bang. People want their pickleball courts. There's talk, I mean, you know, Hazel Park and some other cities have put in adult exercise equipment along paths and in some of the parks. People have have mentioned that they'd like to see that. One other, and again, some of these things are not, these are not a hundred responses that we need this, we need this. These are just kind of some of my favorites. But I thought one that was interesting was the toddler playscape behind the community center. And I think that was, that's an important item where that structure that we have, while it's good, it's probably a little bit advanced for some of the bigger kids, for the smaller kids. And so, thinking about that. Everybody wants an ice rink? I just saw the Royal Oak one open, so go to Royal Oak and skate.
Agreed.
Okay, that's, I thought you might go for that. I think you were gonna be putting water out there.
One thing that holds water in the city is enough.
Fair enough, I appreciate it.
Gary has a street hockey rink, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's plenty of opportunities around. So satisfaction with city services, just moving out along. Again, by and large, if you look at the the two blue bars, the dark blue and the light blue, we've got very satisfied and satisfied, and generally across the board, you see that. Some are more very satisfied, such as landscape maintenance on public property, trash and recycling pickup, very, they're very pleased, very pleased with park landscape maintenance. Some issues around property maintenance, code enforcement, and a little bit of concern around the city website. People like it, but they'd like it a little more easy to use. I'm not sure everybody has their own how how they engage with websites, so. We'll we'll mention that again in the communications piece.
It's one of the highest uncertainties.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, yeah.
Property maintenance, I mean, it's skewed in the numbers.
Right, so you do have that uncertain or don't know, property maintenance, and I think people just aren't quite sure what we're talking about. And certainly the website, people don't engage necessarily, and so. So a lot of these things, I think, when you look at some of this, it it almost opens you up to, as you get more into the master planning, to have some focus groups or something, or just invite some people in to talk about some of these, some of these specific issues. Most serious problems facing the city, careless driving and speeding, surprise, surprise, and then the cost of public services. And then comes other, and then you can see over to the right, when you look at the themes, the other, some of the, what I've never figured out is why somebody marks other and then writes one of the responses that was already there.
Taxes and speeding.
But it happens, you know, so taxes instead of cost of public services, I guess, right? We'll call it taxes, speeding again, traffic noise, everybody is upset with Woodward. And then rats. People have issues with rats, so, just just so you know. But generally, I mean, not really big issues. And I think what what's important, oh, yeah. So so if, so now we wanted to look, okay, so we've got these, so let's look at how they compare to where we were seven years ago. And you can see careless driving and speeding has gone from twenty-three percent to thirty-eight percent. So it has become a bigger issue, as has the cost of public services. Property maintenance has become less so, recreational facilities and programs, people are 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 pleased with those, it don't seem to be a concern. And I think what's the most important, and I mentioned, alluded to that earlier, is crime. Eighteen percent of respondents in two thousand sixteen said crime was an issue. Look at it, two percent in two thousand twenty-three, so. There you go. I don't, you may not feel that way, but it's a, it's a testament to the the police and and the the safety that we feel in the city. So. And when we hear about crime being such an issue everywhere, you know, that crime, crime, crime. So it's it's great to see that Pleasant Ridge residents feel very safe in their homes. Improvements, I'm not gonna go through this, but every, again, some of these, it's fun to read some of the responses, because they get very personal in some cases, and they're very obviously individual. People have issues, and this gave them a great opportunity to let some of that out. And in fact, many of them did. So I'll let you read those at another time. Communications, you know, how do we find resident, how do you find information about the community? The number one was the ridger. Okay, so everybody, I mean, obviously, everybody gets it in the mail, and hopefully they opened it and look at it when it when it comes and it doesn't get lost. But obviously, it's very well valued and it's and it's noticed and recognized by most of the, most of city residents. And then the city website, interestingly enough. And I think because enough people use the city website, it kind of goes back to that question of people may have some issues around it. So the question is, and I leave that to all of you to figure out, what is it about the website people would like? I mean, what do they wanna see, what isn't there now, what are the issues that they'd like to see? And I'm sure that that's something Jim will love to work on going forward. People look at Facebook pages, we did not give them an opportunity to answer. Ann Perry was not on one of the lists, which is how I find out my information. But but you can see the city website, other Facebook pages, PR PR and the Pleasant Ridge Facebook page, people talking to neighbors, people liked email blast, the city e-blast, people were were recognizing. They don't seem to come to the city too often, and you can see water bill announcements, you know. People are so, they see the number and they're not gonna read anything else, right?
I forget to read.
Well, you don't want to.
They're nice.
No, but I forget to read the message every time. I'm like, oh, my gosh.
That's why I always wondered why we advertised the census on electric bills and all these other. People are so upset when they see that, they're gonna, they're not going to.
Read the number of your date.
That's right. So you can see this. And how can we improve communications? Everybody loves the ridger, so I mean, I don't think there's, the redesign and what we've had going for a number of years, I think it's a terrific publication. The one, I mean, obviously, the one issue is you can only go so far ahead with events and and you can, you can only be so up to date in the ridger. As comprehensive it is, as it is, there's always, you know, it's, you're always mixing something that's going to be coming up before that thing gets published, or the timing is not quite right. So, you know, the idea of city email blasts on a regular basis, that kind of update some of those and keep people informed. And I do believe there needs to be kind of a regularity to it. If you're gonna do it, don't do it just because then nobody sees them, or they don't, you know, if you're if you're kind of expecting something, you tend to be more apt to open it up when it comes or look for it when it's coming, so. And again, city web design and and that. And one, and one person said, you know, that they would love to see more email blasts. They didn't think they'd ever say that, but for some reason, they wanted more email. People also wanted text messages when when you asked them that, what other options they might wanna use. Text messages was another. Instagram was not particularly popular, but text message and then email blasts tended to, email and and text tended to be the the favorite ways to be reached. Reasons for living, for decision to live in Pleasant Ridge. And I did, one thing that was interesting, I cross tabbed it by years in Pleasant Ridge. And the only difference, I mean, pretty much it lined up, everybody felt the same. The only difference was newer residents tend to tended to like the the nearness of downtowns, Ferndale and Royal Oak. So it tended to be more that, you know, engagement with the activities in Ferndale and and going to the downtown areas and having those nearby. That tended to be a little bit higher for for the newer residents than for the older.
Center of it all than Southfield.
Right, yes, we are, we are definitely the center of it all. But in terms of walkable neighborhoods, geographic location, again, those were very high, no matter how long you'd been here, no matter your age, everybody felt that. And then obviously, the sense of community was very, very strong. And then we asked, you know, people for other responses, family, obviously, they came here for family, small town atmosphere, LGBTQ friendly, diversity, again, the Ferndale Schools, socially liberal community. And then I like, did not choose it, I married into it. Wasn't my idea, but you know, what are you gonna do?
We're here.
Finally, we we talked twenty-four percent of respondents, we asked people, are you considering moving within the next few years? Twenty-four respondent, twenty-four percent of respondents considered moving. And I'm I'm happy to say, when I look, when I cross tabbed that with with age, it tended to be more, everybody was less than twenty-four percent until you got up to about sixty-five. And then it came into that senior living or downsizing, or the idea we don't have one-story homes, we don't have those kinds of options for people. So it became a little more personal about future living and the ability to to live in a large home over time. And so most, you know, most people felt that they were planning to stay, you know, planning to stay, and even the twenty-four respondents tended to, again, tended to go toward the the older size. And so, but you do see that one of the reasons, property taxes. I mean, people are gonna say that, but as Jim has pointed out, and as we've seen, where are you gonna go? I mean, you know, when you, when you start thinking about property taxes and your options, you may change your mind and decide to stay here. This is, you got a lot for your, a lot for your money. But again, looking to downsize, looking for senior living, as you can see, those tended to be higher. Retirement, moving out of state, that kind of, that kind of thing. It wasn't, it wasn't anything that had to do, maybe taxes, we could talk about, but but it had nothing to do with Pleasant Ridge. It was kind of a stage of life and and what you have, decisions you have to make. And finally, satisfaction with Pleasant Ridge, it's a place to live. Ninety-eight percent of residents are pleased. They're either very satisfied or satisfied. Look at seventy, seventy percent of respondents said they're very satisfied with Pleasant Ridge. Can't ask for much better than that.
That's great.
Yeah, that's great.
And with that.
Were there any don't knows on that last one?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Zero, zero. Maybe it's a point five.
Maybe it's like a fraction.
It has a, it's a little.
Little bit, there are, there are some people that have no idea. If they're happy here, I don't know. And if we, we don't have names, we don't have names, so I can't, but.
Somebody let their cat fill it out.
I hear cats love Pleasant Ridge, it's a place to live, right?
Oh, my goodness.
So, again, there's going to be reports, detailed report, there's gonna be all the the individual responses. There's gonna be plenty there, and, you know, people, if there are cross tabs or anything that people want, they can let us know. But but I think it's a, there's a lot of information in here. It's a very positive story to tell. And I think there's a lot of information that can be used as you start going ahead and planning going forward, so. Any questions?
I have a comment, which, first of all, thank you very much. I mean, this is amazing, and I'm excited for the reports to really dig in. But the one thing that I think is the challenge for all of us and everyone really is like the balance, right? Because we know people love being in Pleasant Ridge, they love the location, they love the parks, they love all of it. But that then is, comes at a cost, right? So you see people, you know, maybe not as satisfied with taxes, but really happy for what they're paying for. And same with location, really happy about the location, upset about the noise. So that is always gonna be the challenge. And I'm so happy to see that the challenges, I think, are being managed and their, the benefits are outweighing some of the negatives. So I think it is a really great result. And I'm excited to, yeah, dig in more and read those comments.
Well, and I, I think it does point out, and I think Jim, Jim sees this, and and Ann, who have been around the longest, and and Brett, you can see what some of the results of the work that's gone on. I mean, you feel kind of a sense of, wow, they do, they love us, they really like, they really like me. But they really like what what has been done, they really enjoy the city. And and again, obviously, we we have such a number of new people moving in, this whole younger city that we see, more kids, you know, we were one of the few cities in southeast Michigan that actually saw growth in their population under eighteen between two thousand ten and two thousand twenty. A lot of cities did, a lot of got got older and we got younger, so that's a good sign. I mean, that certainly is, you want that kind of, you know, in a, in a state that's aging, in a county that's aging, you want a city that's that's not aging, that is, that is seeing that kind of churn and getting the younger people in, so.
And, you know, we we take pride in some of the things that we are as a city. There are a lot of different words that people use to describe Pleasant Ridge. You know, we see a a comment that being walkable is important here and was even in the last survey, it just is gratifying to see that 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 those things that were valuable to us are still valuable to us, even as the people change, and that we're responding to that with city services to match.
Yeah, and people are happy with sidewalks. Good side, good sidewalk.
That was a lot, that was a lot.
Yeah, that was a lot. I mean, a lot of the new residents don't realize what all has gone on to, gone before, but it's.
I don't remember if we asked about sidewalks specifically in two thousand sixteen.
I don't think we did. I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna check. I don't know, I didn't do a comparison on that, I'll have to check to see.
Yes.
And if if the numbers aren't better than our, I'll say we didn't ask.
So I gotta quit, well, first of all, an observation, I'm grateful for the participants and the respondents. That's awesome, I mean, just doing surveys at work or for marketing, et cetera, like having that type of hit rates, huge. And given that our residents have such like a vested interest in like voicing their opinions and and sharing honestly, I mean, I'm, this is great news. Would we be considering doing a survey, like as far as fleshing out what the website redesign would look like? And then follow-up would be, would we be doing this type of a survey on a more regular cadence than, I guess, just on a regular cadence?
I guess there's two questions there. The first is the website. The issue we always run into with the website is that when it's a city government website and you have to cover every topic from dog licenses to leaf pickup, to voting, to audit reports, to everything else, it just, it organizing that and making it easy to find is, and navigate is just a challenge. You know, it's not like a restaurant where you're focused on, you know, something that's this, this, you know, deep. So that's, that's the biggest challenge I've seen with the website. And I don't know, you go to any city website and that's on what it. And I don't know, you go to any city website and that's what it ends up looking like is just dense, right? And finding that information, there's a lot of different ways that cities have tried to approach that. And I don't know that any one of them is more successful than another. We're.
I'm sorry.
Actually.
Oh, no.
So, uh, we've been working with our website, we've been working for probably about six months now on just a reskining and redoing the background for the website. So I think you'll be seeing some changes soon with it, that hopefully we'll get to a lot of this. And even things like trying to incorporate like an AI component that, and I don't know, don't quote me on this yet.
Like a chatbot or something?
Something, yeah, something where you take all the documents and all the topics on the website and bring in, you know, some sort of AI chatbot or something to help hopefully get people to interact with it more quickly, find the information. So, again, we're just exploring that, I don't know, but we're working on it.
And and to drive it back to the question, I mean, I was just commenting that, like, we have a awesome population who is eager to, I guess, provide their opinions. I mean, instead of just doing like benchmarking comparison, et cetera, would it be worth, like, out of the respondents, I don't know if it's, we're able to segregate the people who had opinions about the website or not? Or ask again, but like to to get those opinions fleshed out from the voice of the customer, so to speak?
Maybe.
I don't. So I guess I wanna give an opposite side of it, too. It's like Katie and I were talking to some new neighbors, like we were giving a new neighbor's guide and they were, one gentleman was like, I know all this stuff because the website's so good. I mean, and neither of us know, had met him before or anything like that, but he's like, yeah, I know all the information. So I think, you know, almost anytime you ask someone about a website, they're going to say negative things because, you know, we all have our own things.
I don't think it was negative, right?
And you can always improve.
We've heard, and we've, you know, I've talked to, I've talked to people about the website just over the years, there's no consistent theme that's emerged. Yeah, I mean, I guess we could try to do focus groups, I think we'd be wasting our time. I think we know what the, you know, major issues are and we're taking a crack at it. It's just, it's just finding information quickly. Is what it all boils down to. People wanna find the information quickly and sometimes on a city website, that's just hard.
And the the interesting thing for me in the survey were the uncertain on the website. Because so many people will not use the website, they just come into City Hall.
Yes.
Right, right.
And that's not a bad answer.
Right, right.
It's one of the ways to get information is to come into City Hall. I I imagine that after we do some revamping on the website, it will probably get easier, but I agree. There's just so much information to find. And and it's an interesting learning curve for myself. I recommend everyone just use the search box.
Yeah.
Because the search box usually takes me to what I'm looking for, even on our dense website. Looking for documents is a little difficult because there's so many. But just about everything else, if I just open up the search page and type in a phrase, it pops up. But that's a learning curve for anybody that uses it.
Right, yeah.
Not to lose your point, I.
No, no, yeah, and I was just, again, going like data-driven, using data, using the like the willing voice of the customer, so to speak.
Yes, please.
Yeah, Mayor, I was gonna say, getting people to walk into City Hall, that's how we get them to buy all the T-shirts and the books. Somewhat intentional to have a. No. No, I, I, a few things, thank you, this is illuminating and it's telling and it's exciting. And I'd be curious, too, if if we're gonna look at a topic like Commissioner Lenko identified, which is, I, he's always thinking, he's, you know, considering different things and ways to look at it. Is it statistically significant, you know, is, what is the right number that would say there is a problem? So, I know in corporate America, it's typically like seventy to eighty percent is like an overwhelming pass. I don't know what the website was, but I think it was around that amount. So we'd have to consider if that is good or not, or what the benchmarking would be. I would, I'd be, I'd be curious to see what that is, just to give some more context. But it doesn't dismiss the fact that we we can't do things better and can't entertain other options, it's just kind of a thought in my mind.
Right, yeah.
What is good?
And I think the discussion has been that everybody has a different idea of what they want in a website. I think what I was most surprised was that the high percentage of people that actually go to the website.
Exactly.
I think that says a lot, I mean, and and so it makes you wanna think about, well, is there, are there some, not necessarily, and I and I agree with Jim. I don't think you could get a focus group of ten people and have ten different ideas about what they wanna see on the website or how they wanna interact with the website. And it may not be, if if, as long as you're thinking about it and, you know, in, you know, if you have, just you run into somebody on the street and you're talking about the website or ask them if they actually go to the Pleasant Ridge website, just to see. I mean, that, I think informal kinds of discussions with people would be enough.
And I think that something you mentioned that it will help as well in providing some cadence or regularity to the updates. So people will just know to go once a month and find something new and.
Yeah, and I think that people, you know, it's obvious that people are willing to be hit with emails and texts that they don't, that they don't mind.
With genuine information.
Right, right.
And you ignore it if you know on it, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I always figured, you know, you can update it with an with an email blast and link it to the website or link it to some other source and keep the information going, keep it updated and keep it new and.
Right.
And especially getting some of the, you know, when you need brown water or something like that. When you need people to know.
Exactly.
And again, I mean, I, this is something that I, my own personal thing is getting people to pay attention is so hard.
Oh, my gosh.
So hard.
The new cycle is twenty-five hours a day, eight days a week now.
That's exactly right. And and those numbers that you have today are gone tomorrow, people have forgotten them. And it's so difficult to keep people engaged.
Yeah.
So I think the numbers are really positive. So whether it's the website or any of the other email blast or anything, I think it was a very positive response to communication. And that, you know, you just gotta try a little bit of everything. And eventually, you know, and then Ann will do her door knocking just to make sure that.
Little videos of cute kids.
That's right, well, video, videos of cute kids answering the census or answering the survey, so.
Yeah, and the part two to my earlier question, but do we wanna consider doing such a survey, or what would you recommend as far as a cadence?
Oh, for, oh, for a survey? I'm not gonna do that, I'm not.
So we would keep a standard set of questions as 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 a reference, right? So you would recycle some of the questions, which would cut out a bunch of the heavy lift. So if we're gonna recycle eighty percent of the questions, the amount of effort that goes into building the survey is probably eighty percent less than this first version or the second version, so.
Yeah, everyone gets a little bit easier.
Yeah, yeah, so like, wouldn't it make sense to do this kind of like on a periodic, like a predictable basis?
I'll I'll give you my perspective, we might arm wrestle over how much data. I think the results that we saw were fairly consistent for between twenty sixteen and twenty twenty-three. There were a couple of categories where things changed dramatically. And for those, it might make sense to just go back and do a sense check to see if there's still some trending or something that's dramatically changing that we need to address. But the rest felt fairly consistently good, actually.
Yeah.
So that would tell me that.
And I think, I think the other part of it is that this is not the only survey that's happened in seven years.
That too.
Yeah.
So, you know, this is the broad, all-encompassing community survey. That cadence is probably longer, just because you don't wanna, you don't wanna create survey fatigue. So I don't know what the right interval is to do that, check in for all of these issues. But in between, we've done many more targeted surveys that were on, you know, more focused issues, just being more agile. And we know that we have some some particular thing that's facing us. There's gonna be a master plan survey next year that will also, the master plan Parks and Recreation Survey. So that'll be another big effort next year that's coming. So, you know, we did the Recreation Plan Survey in twenty nineteen. So we, it's, there's been a lot of data collection in between. So, I don't know, that's my only thought on, I don't wanna commit to anything for the big, broad community survey. I think, you know, that five to eight-year range is probably what I think is about right for that. And knowing that we're doing, you know, a lot of little check-ins in between.
Right.
Right, I was gonna say that, 'cause when I went, you know, started with the Survey Monkey trying to create the survey, I was amazed how many other surveys that Pleasant Ridge has conducted. So, you know, right there, and that's what I was just gonna say, is there gonna be some specific, you may come up with some specific, even taking out of this, maybe a couple of questions or something somewhere down the line. But, yeah, there'll be plenty of opportunities, I think, the big, as as Jim said, the big one should be six, seven, five, seven years, something like that. But but with the the other opportunities, I think you fill it in, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was wonderful to be here.
Yeah.
It's fun.
All right. I think we're up to the city manager report.
Uh, yes. Made some notes. I think Katie, you mentioned it, Leaf Collection, Briar is getting after it this year.
Oh, God, yeah. Three ti- three or four times last week.
Yeah, every week, every single week, they finished their appointed side early and have gone and worked ahead on the other side of the city. So, yes, things are, things are going well with Leaf Collection. You know, we're halfway there. Hopefully it continues that way.
Well, leaves just need to all fall. Yes.
I have a big green oak tree in my backyard.
Right, so, yeah, it's interesting watching the state of the trees. I look up when I'm driving around more than I should this time of year. Woodward, as you noticed, you know, it's like painting, it's ninety percent prep work when you're doing projects like these and it feels like nothing is happening and why have I been driving on two lanes on Woodward for seventeen years? And then all of a sudden, everything happens all at once. So, yeah, we saw a lot of progress in the last week. I think they've actually resurfaced a lot of the road in Ferndale. So at this point now, we're getting to traffic to striping, to lane markings, to all the finish work on the streetscape. You'll see a lot of the cycle track has been poured, the trees are getting planted, so that's good, good to see that progress. On the streetscape on our side, all the hardscape, the curbs will be done, all the lanes will be open to traffic over the winter, but this will be fully completed in the spring. So there's some brick paver work that's going to go on either side of the new cycle track. Don't know if that's gonna get done this fall or if that gets pushed to spring. They're planting the trees now, but the rest of the landscaping will be spring, just 'cause we're getting too late to, you know, feasibly finish that at this point. There's going to be some work done up at Main and Six-Nine-Six that will be done in the spring. So we're gonna be, again, ninety percent of the way there with the project, but it will be spring before it's completely, fully, fully done. Related to the Woodward project and also some other things, it's been fun. We had to move a fire hydrant on Woodward. We were not able to, because when we tried to simply turn off the valves to shut them, water main down, to move the fire hydrant, we couldn't. So that caused a lot of issues, brown water on the east side, water pressure drops all over the city from turning a few valves on Woodward. So we're coming up with a different plan for how we can move that fire hydrant. Again, that fire hydrant where it's currently located is in the way of where the cycle track is going. So that's probably something that also gets pushed until spring to finish that one little segment of cycle track. Out here, we had to tap a fire hydrant to do the sewer lining project on Oakland Park and then the fire hydrant broke 'cause it was from eighteen ninety-eight. And today, we were doing the test shut-off again on the valves to see if we could shut down the water main to change the fire hydrant. And we just barely got there. But again, that was a longer, more difficult process than it should have been, so. That will be happening, we can change that fire hydrant. So anytime we touch anything with the water system, I lose sleep.
We might need some poetic tiles for our water system.
Can't replace these water mains fast enough. One of the things we're gonna be doing with WRC, so we moved to Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner for our water and sewer maintenance. And they actually are the water system operator in many communities in Oakland County. With us, it's more of a hybrid approach. But they're gonna be doing some valve inspection programs throughout the city, we'll talk more about that. But that's where they basically go and just turn all the valves to make sure that they close and work. There's valves out there that are closed right now. There's a valve on the the water main that runs between Oxford and Oakland Park that's been closed. For, we don't know how long. So at some point, somebody left that closed, so we have to go through and figure all of that out, too. And it's one of the, one of the drawbacks of not having your own DPW department. The one point eight million from the state, that is in motion. So we're not gonna be waiting for that for three years like we were the federal funding for Kensington.
That's great.
So that's coming. And again, we're accelerating work on Oakdale for the water main. So that should be coming somewhat quickly after Kensington is done. There's one more thing I had that I didn't write down, I don't remember what it was.
Mayor?
Yes.
So regarding the the Woodward, the cycle track and the whatever, where they won't be able to finish everything up this fall, will, what will be open to pedestrian, to people?
Sidewalks will be open to pedestrians.
How about the cycle track?
Uh, cycle track, we don't know yet.
Okay.
We will see where we get to, but it may be fenced off because there might be gaps.
Okay.
Where we can't move that fire hydrant till spring. Possibly that fire hydrant, we could get it done and weather cooperates and we get it poured, we don't know yet.
Okay.
Too soon to tell. But we also may not get the brick pavers in, so there may be gaps on the sides of the cycle track.
So we probably don't wanna.
So we probably don't want it open 'cause that becomes a hazard.
So we just sort of have barrels or barricades?
Yep, or snow fence or something that fences off the cycle track portion.
And then.
Working with the contractor to see where we get.
But the barrels will be off the road.
Yes.
Okay.
Road will be open to traffic.
Sometime this month or so.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, no, we're all looking forward to that.
Mayor, if I could, speaking of Woodward-ish, Woodward Heights, I know that was, we were hoping to do do that this fall and it sounds like that also is being pushed to the spring, weather-wise?
Probably, yeah, for for two main reasons. One, I mentioned the lane striping that has to happen. The company that's bid, the only company that bid on the Woodward Heights project is also the company that does all the lane striping for all the projects in all of the region, PK Contracting. So right now, they're busy with end of season finishing all the road projects that are going on. They gotta come out and do the lane markings and they're the ones installing the the bike lane delineators on the Ferndale portion of the project. So they are busy right now. So I don't think they're, they're not gonna get out to Woodward Heights until the spring.
Okay.
Which is okay, because part of the thing is the the concrete is is damp this time of year and lane markings and everything don't adhere to it as well.
Be doing it twice.
And there's leaves everywhere, right? So you'll remember a few years ago, maybe you 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 may not remember, but a few years ago, the the stripes on Woodward Heights, the edge stripes between the parking lane and then off of the curb, they did those in the fall, around this time of the year. And they didn't last, they, we had to get those redone six months later, 'cause by the spring, they were gone. So at this point, yeah, it's not, it will be better off from a long-term perspective, waiting till spring and also as a practical matter. We're not gonna get them here until spring, just 'cause there's so much else going on.
Our request has gone in, but the likelihood is, it would make sense to do it at this point.
Right. Yes, and they are slammed.
Yeah.
So even getting answers from them and scheduling right now is.
Fixing the roads.
Yeah. So we 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 have been likely pushed to spring, I don't have a final answer on that, but it's probably ninety-seven percent.
Okay.
So we have to communicate that out to the Woodward Heights residents still.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Well, not excellent, but thank you and I understand.
Yeah.
And it makes sense.
All right, I think that brings us to other business. Anyone have any other business?
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you. So we do have T-shirts, actually, at City Hall.
Tell me about these T-shirts.
They're lovely, they're very soft, very, we have a lovely size array as well for adults and a couple of kid sizes. And they're twenty-five dollars right here at City Hall. If anyone needs one delivered and, you know, we can figure out how to do that, too. But they are, they're very nice, they're a lovely mix. Also, I wanted to just mention again something that Commissioner Budnick mentioned. It's the Pleasant Ridge Garden Club Holiday Greens Workshop is Wednesday, December sixth at six thirty. Now, it is up at the community center, it is one of their big fundraisers that really helps them raise money for, you know, all of the, you know, the, you know, the city contributes some, but the the garden club puts a lot of money into the plants and flowers that you see around the city. And so this is a really great opportunity to have some fun, you know, bring some friends and neighbors, your family, and come out. And it's a very fun evening where of just doing a a cool holiday floral, not floral, but greens arrangement. It's fifty dollars and you can, let's see, the best way to tell you to do this, the 'cause you do need to reserve. And if you call the commu-, if you call the recreation center, Shawnee can give you the specific details. Right here, they have, it, yeah, it's, you can do a fifty-dollar check or they are taking Venmo. Reach out to me and I can give you the information offline. But was it aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org and I will give you more information. But it is a great fundraiser. And so I'm always very grateful to the garden club for all the work they do around the city of making, making things beautiful. of making, making things beautiful. The other thing is, the women's club is having their holiday gathering on Thursday, yeah, Thursday, December seventh at six thirty up at the community center. And it is, it, it's a, this is a great time to join. It's twenty-five dollars to join the women's club. We do a lot of work to raise money for scholarships for kids who live within the Ferndale School District, and no matter what school they go to. And then dinner is just ten dollars. They're having it actually catered this time. And, but it's a fun, a fun way to meet more neighbors and, and community members, too. So you can reach out to me on that one, too. aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org. Thanks. That's all.
All right. Anything else?
Just want a quick plug. I'm wearing Ridge Resale tonight, so I just wanted to plug Ridge Resale. The awesome stuff, I recommend going and checking it out. And then also, there are deer, if you notice. And I'm inspired by Ted Zachary, so the, the visual aids. Now's the time, there's plenty of deer on the road. Hunting season starts, firearms starts tomorrow, but just, what's, what's the expression? If, if you see a deer, don't veer on the road, so safety first out there. We're not really affected by that so much here, but we're all driving around.
We have our deer moments.
We have, yeah, even on Wellesley, I, I saw deer when I was living on Wellesley in front of my house, so.
Right.
Stay safe out there, guys.
Indeed.
Maybe Pat's coyotes got rid of him.
Yeah. I'll, I'll thank Commissioners Perry and Budnick for giving of your time again for another four years. Congrats for the victory.
Thank you.
We, we normally have a swearing-in after the election, but the election was a little too close to this meeting to have confirmed everything, so we'll catch that in December, I guess. And so join the party in December. Maybe I'll get them both to wear reindeer sweaters and.
There you go.
Something else, something festive. And I think that's it. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Support. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion, the meeting is adjourned. Beautiful, thanks for coming.